Everybody please rise, Brother Ed. Would you give the invitation, please?
Dear Father, we want to thank you so much for the fact that we can come to you and pray to you at any time in our lives, at good times, bad times. We thank you for that, that we have access to you. We thank you, Lord, also, that you love us unconditionally, each and every one of us. We thank you, dear Father, that even with our faults and even our sinful nature, dear God, you have provided a way for our sins to be forgiven. I thank you, Lord, for these that serve and these that are going to be serving. I pray, dear Lord, blessings upon them. I pray blessings upon the work that they do for our city. I pray you protect them. I pray, dear Father, that you give them wisdom. And I pray, dear Father, that the decisions that are made would be to the betterment of this community. I pray, dear Father, and I thank you, Lord, for those that serve us, Lord, through law enforcement and through the fire department. I pray, Lord, a special protection on them. I pray, dear Father, that you guide them. Thank you, dear Father, for them on a daily basis. And, Lord, we just ask, dear Lord, that you just make yourself very clear to us as to what we should do. Help us to know the difference between right and wrong, and help us, dear Father, to do what is right. We pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Brother Ed. Mr. Frank Crafton, would you please, and pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's go ahead and dive on into this. Joyous evening, hopefully, from me. In your package, you have minutes from April 7th, 2015, that we need to approve. Is there a motion to do such?
Motion second.
Motion is second. Is there any corrections? If not any, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passed. Now we'll move into department reports, and listen, I see if you're here, Stephen, would you like to? Thank you, Scott.
I apologize for my age and asking me, because I've been traveling a lot here lately. The last meeting, Gary Figgins represented me, so I was watching online. But we are going to have a couple of meetings coming up. The farmer's market was something that ran by the Downtown Revitalization Act. The Chamber of Commerce recognizing the value of that program and wants to continue it. So we will be overseeing it under our umbrella. Well, we had a community meeting for the farmer's market on April 28th at 2:00 at the Chamber of Commerce office. So any interested previous vendors, anyone who's interested in being a vendor or helping volunteer with the event is welcome to come to that meeting. Two days later, on April 30th, we'll be having another community meeting for the Ride the Fault Line that's coming. There's still a community meeting, we can't keep dissing. So we just want to have a meeting with community members and see where everyone's at with what they're reviewing for those bike owners. And at the last meeting, we all talked about the J.C.'s request for barkeep football. So they've been notified of the program and how we're going to go forward with that. It's me, Mark, it heavily through the Wizard Division of Tourism, that's part of what I was doing last week. That's how they're helping to represent tenants for that.
What they found?
My 23rd, 23rd. Maybe their car will be here. That's all I got, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, Mr. Carter?
As you all know, we advertise equipment for sale, used equipment for sale. Speaking against the committee, we would like to request the council approve the sale of some of the equipment. A 1998 Chevrolet Duster, that's Delta Auto Sales, $2,765. 1997 Ford F-150, Gibson Auto Sales, for $1,051. 1989 Ford F-150, Gibson's Auto Sales, for $1,185. 2002 Ford Pickup, F-150, to the Kent Park Board, for $2,505. The mosquito sprayer that goes slide in the back of the pickup truck, in the city of Campbell, for $1,800. Home made to Wilmer Schreiber, for Walter Deering, for $15.
Is there a motion to approve the sale?
Motion second.
And discussion?
The money that we receive for these items, we'd like to keep in the reserve equipment as well. They stay with the street department, kind of to help with our long-range plans of dealing with the steel ply issue and things like that.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passed.
With Rising or being out at the last council meeting, we fail to get a bid through the council. We requested bids from three vendors for the 30-yard roll-off dumpster. Place six of them at the compost facility for cleanup of Kennet this year. Received one bid and one no bid, Mr. Rising, I would have known. Received a bid for $325 per roll-off that's empty from Branham's, supposed to be Kennet. This will be, they will be placed at the compost for 10 working days for the first two weeks of May. It may be free to citizens of Kennet to bring things out there, minus the batteries, tires, major car parts, oil, paint, the normal things that aren't accepted. This will be run during the compost hours Tuesday through Saturday for two weeks, 10 working days. We feel like that the maximum amount before you'd be looking at on that would be somewhere around $19,500. And that would be all of the 60 roll-offs, every day for 10 days.
Does it compare in the walk, see what?
Eighty to ninety thousand for the pickup home, Mr. Carter. I mean, that's what the last we paid, if I remember right, and I'm pulling that number back off, you know. That's not, that's not a current bid.
Hey, to complete the story, we're going to use the savings to tear down housing and clean it up.
Yeah, I mean, there'll be other, other things.
Do you have any way to compact the store in there so we can maximize?
Not real well. The only thing we've really got, neither one of them is made for, will be our loader in the back of them. Neither one of them really has that much down pressure on them. But we're planning on probably having an extra person out there for the first few days. It's half the whole great, the person at compost that we could be overwhelmed and really couldn't look at important being unloaded square. How so? Even more than anything. So, you know, we're looking at having a piece of equipment down there, see what we can do.
You say that's your city?
Yes, sir. Right now, we require either a bill, city like Essie Waterville, or say your driver's license and attach that address on it. If you haven't had your driver's license renewed and you've been, if you've got a utility bill or something, you gotta make sure it look like that. We have to see something.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion to approve this.
Okay.
A motion second. Any more discussion?
I'd like to remind you that that's tied also into a project that you're going to be working on after your retirement from the mayor position. Just make sure you remember that.
I remember, unfortunately. I remember. Hear that, Lindsay? Not done yet.
One more project.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passed.
Couple of quick updates. The hiking and biking trail of the Sidewalk Port, you know, contractor's been held up from bad weather. We discussed it in detail today, and we think that with reasonable weather the rest of this week and next week, they could probably be wrapping up next week. The electrical work was finished today. Four new street light poles are all up. Still got a little bit of wiring to do from city like Ess and Water, but, you know, that makes it, they couldn't proceed too far, too fast. We're hoping for leasing next week. One attorney present in the room, I hope we get his driveway board tomorrow. We'll get into it pretty soon. Not missing any names.
We've been able to get in.
I know. The last thing, thank you all again for the paint striper. We finally went ahead and used it today, the conditions weren't ideal. But we were able to do the east, north, and west side of the square, part of the south side of the square. Two men, approximately two and a half hours on the ground up there, and that was cleaning and painting. Got 49 of the five, if they had the most, I think it's a striper and go around the square. I think it's a big, between an hour, savings. We'll do that. I would appreciate it.
Good work down there. I said it earlier, say it again. Chief, a lot.
Couple things, follow what Renee had say about the roll-offs. We'll start making sure that they get out to neighborhoods, and there are avenues for the paint, cars, batteries. We'll start getting information out, keep it active. So we'll try to work that, my favorite, great effort trying to clean up the community.
And immediately, to follow up with that, immediately afterward, we're going to have some, pretty much, tolerance on the cleanup. No excuse for haul away trash and rubbish.
There shouldn't be, coming here.
We'll hit that pretty hard and hit that word out, hopefully, to the citizens.
And follow up on the trash issue, as we reported last meeting. I think as far as the trash pile that we were talking about being dumped, it's going to be sold as far as being picked up, however it is in state courts this time, so there's more to come on that. And that was the biggest concern at this point was to get the garbage picked up and moved before the heat of summer and mosquitoes and everything else sets in. Police Department, they're made a news release, they're making an effort to try to, I guess you might say vigorously pursue and put in force city ordinances in and around the parks of the cities where citizens of Kennet and visitors can feel free going to a park without threats of loud music or speeding or being harassed or whatever. So with that, they're going to do a little bit more patrol, not that we've had an abundance of it, but now that the warm weather's set in, people like to get out with their children to the various parks throughout the city without having to be bothered with some of the nuisance. So we're going to start doing a little more patrol, and even the juvenile officer has pledged his just painting efforts in the measure, so I think that's great. People should be able to enjoy the park and not have to worry about someone else intruding on their peace of mind and privacy. On the 12th this month, once again, we had the unfortunate incident of a shooting that resulted in a death, and it required call out of the Major K Squad in Dunkland County. And this is basically the Missouri State Highway Patrol investigators, Dunkland County Sheriff's Office, the Baldwin Police Department, and an officer of the Kennet Police Department. They've had about 184 hours over a five-day period. And it's an ongoing investigation, and I'd like to say with the camera rolling that, you know, officers can only take information that they discover at the scene, and the information that's given to them and market. He takes people who were there to step forward and provide additional information. So we're asking tonight that if anyone that was on the Baldwin Street area on the night of the 12th, you have information, please call Kennet Police Department at 888 or 4622. If you know an officer, ask to speak to that officer in confidence. We need additional information to continue to move forward. And it's a shame when people were right there, had information, but they don't want to cooperate in a citizenary kind of way. So they're vigorously pursuing this, and I feel confident that they will get enough, they'll get a warrant for an arrest or two in the future. But it's a slow go when people want to clam up and they don't want to provide information. So with that, we're asking for additional information and cooperation from citizens of Kennet that may know something. Last Friday, there was a, one of the DWI checkpoints kicking off the summer, it was held in Kennet. It was at 412 and Route Z. There was a seven-hour checkpoint from 8:03, they had 646 vehicles that were checked. Out of that, there were 39 citations written, which is only about 6%, which, when you look at that, 6% is, you know, 39 out of 646 is pretty good. People are wearing their seat belts and they're, you know, have their identity or their insurance card. They weren't driving DWI, things like that. Out of this, they had like, what was it, do you want me to like, three or four mini chases where people tried to evade it and end up an officer go to stop them or evade them, and they took off, but they end up getting the culprits in the end. They had one felony arrest, and that was after a pursuit of the vehicle. They had one resisting arrest. They had six driving while or suspended or driving while remote. And if you look at that, that's six people that were driving a car with no license. For whatever reason, they were suspended out there, and you and I paying insurance, keeping their driver's license up, we're vulnerable if they get in an accident with us. There was 12 with no operator's license, 13 no vehicle insurance, and one DWI. And what was unique about that, and I was talking to the officer, this individual had left Nashville, Tennessee, which is about a four-hour more drive, and left the bar at Nashville, and was stopped at this checkpoint and was still registering under the influence. He stopped to think about driving four or five hours on probably the interstate all the way to here to go through that checkpoint. It's pretty serious. They had one seatbelt and four failure to register with the department of the car. Remedy. So it was pretty successful. They had officers from Cape, Jackson, Bertrand, Dexter, Crowesville, and Hightide PD. This is a kind of a task force that does this, and they'll each have one of their DWI checkpoints, and we'll have officers to go and support them. On the fire side, you've got your monthly fire report for March. And had to say, we're down a little bit this year as compared to last year, which is always a good sign. I think one big thing that helped us, it rained early and greened up quickly, and that always prevents the spraying natural cover fires. So if you have any questions, you can look over that report, and if you have any questions about anything on it, want to get with me. We'll answer them either after the meeting or next meeting. Any other questions, anything? Thank you.
Jay, you want to mention something about the bike, please?
About what?
The bike patrol.
Oh, yes, I didn't have that to pay. I believe Walmart donated a couple of bikes. Years ago, they had a program that hunted it, but it kind of got waxed over the years. But with getting some of the younger officers, they're interested in some of the new techniques and new ideas out there at the scene in some of the other cities. And with that, they've got two officers that have volunteered to be bike patrol officers. What this will do is allow them to get out into neighborhoods and get out in through the community where they're more visible, but they can actually stop quickly, talk to people, and do more of a community involvement program. And so as you see them around, you're going to see them, because they have bright green shirts that are highly visible. It's not like typical law enforcement where you try to be a little subdued and not seen as much. It's more to be seen and be heard and to hopefully develop contacts throughout the community as well as, they're there to do enforcement as well. And a lot of cities have done this, that have parks with a lot of activities or when they have special community events. Where it's crowded, it's easier to get around on a bicycle and miss patrol car. Appreciate it.
I'm a little nervous in here, and I think it owes them recognition, you know, you mentioned about Walmart donating.
Yes.
Also, Skier Kell donated the uniform and hats.
Yes.
And shoes, which is another local business that contributed to it. It looks like there remains some production out of it for arrests shortly after the start itself.
You know, a lot of your, a lot of your cities, you know, are going on alternative means, and hopefully, the young guys, you know, they're wanting to get out and do a lot of these programs, they're just out of the academy, and a lot of that academy is what they learn and what they hear and what they see, and that's great. To be a little bit more proactive and approach things from a different angle, I think it'll be good, you know, for the community as a, Walmart seems to be really pumped up by it. So if you see them out there, whack them down, tell them thanks, and, you know. If you got any information, pass it along to them, that's worth the while.
They look good. You holding the hats, it's looking sharp.
Yes.
Excuse me, I have one question.
Yes.
Is it a voluntary program or is it a big conversation?
They're normal.
They're all new.
All right, that would conclude department reports. We'll move into old business. Do you have anything for old business, do we?
Yes.
Is that the payout application days, or is that?
Pay out.
Oh, okay. So in old business, we had human resource proposal. Everyone have thought of her?
Yes. In your package, since I wasn't here last meeting, I didn't want this to be discussed in case there were some questions that Glenda maybe had given me the answer to. But the council wanted her to come back with an outline of what her intent was and what her cost was going to be. And so she's estimating for 40 hours for $2,600. I did check to see there's another, there's all kinds of programs out there, but there was one program in particular for supervisors to go to, and that one program would have, would cost $1,000. So anything that's going to be done in the line of training for our employees is not going to be cheap. We really haven't done a lot in the past, and, you know, I just think everybody's got to understand that this is something that we have got to do. $2,600 may sound like a lot of money, but if it keeps us from having a larger lawsuit, then it's going to be, you know, pennies on the dollar. So here is the proposal to complete what we have already started.
Is this for the handbook? Are you talking about training? I'm hearing two different things.
Well, this is everything that's listed on here. It's on the handbook. When she spoke to a lot of the employees, she got them to commit to doing some things. This would be she could come back and follow up to see if those things have been done.
Like what? I mean, I guess I'm not here at all, I mean, what, what are saying? I'd like to have a better understanding of it. Well, I, I just said it's here that she will do the, will $2,600 get us an employee handbook? And that's, that's all, though, I mean, we're not, there's nothing here that says training.
Well, and maybe that's just, maybe that's just being in conversation with me. Because she had talked about the need to, probably come back and do a little follow-up. And it was my understanding it was all included in this price, but she doesn't have that on there.
Renee, comments?
This isn't a, this is just employee handbook only, it's not the well cause and procedures for departments, right? This is just a little employee handbook.
I think it's a great idea.
Coming from the chairman of the human resource?
Yes. I think it's $2,600 well spent.
Well, it might be, it's for the accident, I mean, we, as far as I know, I know nothing about this woman's qualifications. I mean, as far as I know, she's never worked in municipality, and she's worked in banking, and I don't, I mean, I just don't know that she would necessarily understand our needs. And I guess I'm thinking if we're going to do this, we might ought to look and see what's out there. To just, you know, or at least see what her qualifications are to do this. She seemed like a very nice woman, I hate to be saying this in a way, but I just, I mean, we need a new employee handbook. But I'm, I'm not sure what qualification she brings to the table to do employee handbook for the city.
Well, this is something that's been needed for a long time, and, you know, we have started on it. I would like to see her be able to finish what she started. Then if, once we get the handbook, if we want to look elsewhere to try to continue with training, because the training is going to have to be a continuous thing.
How were, I mean, I guess to kind of answer your question, I mean, how were you able to locate her to start the process, I mean?
Because I've known her for 15 years.
Okay.
She does the work for Sinus Bank.
Like policy and handbook and?
So, I mean, I've, I've seen her, her work, I've gone by her work.
Okay. I hope that helps, I mean, I just.
But is policies for, I'm going to ask you. For policies for a bank and for city government, are they something to be the same on? We're not dealing with policies, we're just talking about the employee.
It's employee handbook, it's a lot of your do's and don'ts.
In the second sentence here, it says identify two or more submature experts. Is she wanting two experts to help her come up with policies?
No, she's just, she's just wanting to look over it, just to make sure that it's what it needs to be.
Because I think originally, one of our concerns was she was operating with little to no supervision before, and so I think this kind of helps to eliminate that concern. That's my opinion, but that's one that's probably there.
We've got a human resource committee, and this is where we're at now.
It just seems like sometimes we know we need to do something, but then we drag our feet, and then that just prolongs getting it done.
Well, City Clerk recommends it based off of her past performance. Whereas right now, there's no other option on the table unless someone else has a better option. I think the council needs to move in order to protect the city. City Attorney, would you think that we need to move on, on at least a policy pretty soon?
We absolutely need a new employee handbook, since we haven't had a new employee handbook since 1991 or two. And you really ought to be revising them at least every five years. And...
And I'm confident that between me and whoever else has chosen to review and revise content, I think we can tailor this to fit the needs of the city, whatever she does.